All right, it's 9:30 a.m., ninth day of October, Tuesday. We will bring this regular meeting to order. Let the record show Larry Holsey, John Curtis, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Don Krantz are all present. Would you join us in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Go make your seat if you'd like. Larry, would you say a prayer for court please?
Dear me Father, thank for this day you give us. Father, we pray for wisdom, guidance, and understanding on this court. May your will be done in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Larry. All right, John, will we approve the minutes of the previous commissioners' court?
Okay, and we were discussing before court. We have three sets on the 10th of September, two on the 13th of September, two on the 17th of September, one on the 24th, and two on the 28th for a total of 10 minutes. I'll make a motion that we approve of those 10 sets of meetings.
I have a motion by John to approve the previous meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion for John or Michelle? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number four, presentation by Marilyn Phillips for National Night Out. Marilyn, would you like to take the microphone? How you doing Andy?
I'm here sir.
Good morning and thank you. I'm here representing some of our county crime stoppers. For the last several years, we have used the National Night Out theme to, instead of having it in neighborhoods as it was designed, we bring it to the square so the whole community can see as we showcase and highlight the fire department, sheriff's department, police department, game warden, highway patrol, 911 coordinators, all of our first responders to just say thank you and honor them. And we're asking for your permission to do that on the square for September the 27th, Saturday evening from 4:00 to 6:00.
Does anybody object to crime stoppers using the courthouse square again as they have so many times before? Any objection at all? I didn't put on there take action, I should have Marilyn, sorry. I just put presentation.
Okay, thank you.
So if there is not an objection, then I guess you feel free to go ahead. Thank you very much Marilyn. Thanks for what you do. Item number, I'm sorry. Item number five, discuss take action on proving contract between Grayson County and Somerville County Juvenile Board. This is one that we didn't get approved because we didn't have it complete last month. Andy and I believe they've been through this one also, along with the rest of them, they just had one revision they had to do before we approved it. So do I have a motion to approve the Grayson County contract with the juvenile services?
Sure move.
I have a motion by John.
Thinking.
I have a second by Kenneth.
Only objection I'd give is we have to deal with up there, you know?
Which one? Oh, that's right.
The police.
Used to be our chief, she went back to work, that's right, I forgot about that. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. I'll just pass this down Michelle so it'll be in your stack. Item number six, discuss take action on allowing COG to coordinate with the Census Bureau to be Somerville County's primary participant for this region. I wasn't here when we went through this last time, so I don't know if y'all did this or not, but COG is volunteering to lead the PSF effort. They are prepared to coordinate the effort, be the Census Bureau designee, primary participant in the region in this role. They will contact all the cities, the counties affected by splitting or merging boundaries so they can provide the preferences for the boundaries. We will help work through any conflicting boundary requests between entities and then incorporate all changes to be submission for each county in the region. So it takes a lot of headache and heartache off of local government officials.
Well, the last time we did it, I was here and we hired a firm, I think out of Wake burg or Austin, and it was really not impactful on us. We did have some meetings, we did, Zach ended up not in his precinct on the first redraw of the boundary lines, but we were able to fix that, but I think this would probably be as good if not better a deal.
Sounds like what they're going to try to do is coordinate with all the counties in the region. So do we have a motion to move forward where I can submit the letter to have them represent us?
I have a question.
All right.
I think it cost us $5,000 last time. I didn't see a pricing here, did you?
On this I didn't, on what I got from Jim Allison, I did. It was going to be about $5,000 for the initial, and I think $7,500 after that, but on this there is.
Right, and Allison was involved in the other one.
With the last one. The only pricing that I've seen is through the Allison firm.
Okay. That's the only question I have here.
I'll make a motion, go ahead. I have a motion to move forward, COG, let's see. Yeah, coordinate and represent Somerville County with the Census Bureau. I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by John. Any further questions or discussion that I can try and answer?
Is it through the caucus election?
No, not through COG, it says if they volunteer, which we'll see how that works out. All right, do we have any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Catch up on some paperwork here. We have some meetings in September anyway. Sure old day. I know you and Don are going to miss that.
My dad would be here for anyone of the, in the future, sitting out here making sure he doesn't do that.
Get a podium complaint?
Draw on the board.
Yeah, draw on the board. Yeah, I'll say that. Hope sign that's letting, go Larry. Ask Dwayne to work on your roof, whichever length you. They hadn't signed it. You and Larry haven't gone above getting signed. All right, item number seven, discuss take action on resolution for an indigent defense grant program. This is one we do each year, which we get some of our money back for attorneys that we appoint. Yeah, we appoint about $60,000 worth and we give back.
Last year sixty-one thousand five hundred is what the, um...
Sixty-one thousand five hundred on attorneys, on indigent, excuse me, and we give back roughly thirteen thousand, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the mix, I'm working through that request now. They give us back, and typically it's about fifteen cents on the dollar, and it's only for criminal cases.
Right. So do I have a motion where we can enter into indigent defense grant program so we can get some money back?
I made a motion.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Uh, Michelle, would you mind emailing me a copy of this so I can upload it to the state?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, item number eight, discuss take action on contract, contract with ProQuest for the Somerville County Library. This is the one for ancestry.com, which we approved during the budget sessions for the library to come out of the library fund itself.
Was that fourteen hundred?
Yes.
That's what we put in the budget, I haven't seen the amount.
Yeah, let's see, yes, that's exactly what it was, fourteen hundred.
Make a motion that we approve the ProQuest contract for the Somerville County Library.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Michelle, I'm going to upload this to them and then they're going to fill out their part and get it back.
Okay.
As soon as I get it back, then I'll give it to you.
Okay.
See how that goes.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully we'll get it back in the time and manner. Okay, discuss take action on contract with THLA, this is also what we discussed in budget hearing. Texas Hotel and Lodging Association is for $6,325. That includes ever bed and breakfast, ever hotel, what else? All the cabin owners.
The CBB is going to be part of that?
Yeah, CBB, the county. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Isn't that two, three, four?
Twenty-eight folks throughout the city and the county will benefit from, that actually own businesses. So any questions?
It has to be paid out of the hotel taxes.
Yes, the hot tax.
By the county expenditure per se.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Larry to enter into contract with Texas Hotel and Lodging Association.
Thinking.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion?
I think there's a misspelling on these.
Trash wheels?
Trash ropes, RV results.
Trash rocks.
Ropes? Just a second from the...
That's pretty cool.
Anyway.
Just rocks. Any other further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against.
County auditor didn't prepare that.
Here comes the defense.
I sound like a guilty of speaking out, there must be something that you messed up.
No, no.
I actually don't have a contract, Michelle, that's an invoice. Would you like to have a copy of invoice to enter into the record or?
Sure, I'll take whatever I can get.
All right. Will you just let me stick it down with your, rest your paperwork?
Kenneth, did you second that?
Yes, sir.
Did you second?
Yeah.
Do you want to vote?
Are we ready? All in favor said motion, five, four, zero against. We'll discuss it out. All right, item number 10, discuss take action repairing exterior doors of annex. One's up there by Suzie's, we tried to get done, you remember the last bid was thirty-eight hundred? We had, I think, three doors replaced and many fixed. We tried to repair hers, we couldn't get repaired. Y'all authorized if it was under $5,000 along with that thirty-eight hundred to go ahead and do it. It's not going to be to replace the one by Suzie's office and to replace the one on the community, well, they call it community service, it's actually probation, adult probation. It's $4,180, and that's total replacement of the entire door. The panics are no longer, you can't buy me along with their out of date, so on and so forth. But I couldn't move forward with the other because it exceeded $5,000.
They still need to look at the one, the double doors as well. A couple of times last week it didn't catch, so it's still kind of...
If they vote to proceed on this when they're back, we have them look at that one more time?
Yeah, I think they can tweak it, or maybe with the two doors there, you know, maybe they can animalize and make that one work. But there have been a couple of times I've come up in the morning and someone else has gone through that door and it hadn't closed, and I just walk right in, and it's certainly not good.
In Suzie's, you think it's locked and it's not, you walk out and you reach back and it's...
Suzie's is horrible.
Yes, and I didn't realize until, I guess maintenance not in here brought to my attention, I went over probation office, they can't lock theirs, and now they get it locked, but they have trouble locking. But anyhow, sorry about that. Do we want to proceed forward? It's $4,180 to do the probation and to do county treasurer. And that's actually replacing two complete doors and hardware.
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Kenneth to proceed forward.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Don, and I figure you want to bring up fixing some other door somewhere, John?
No, I just have a question that I was kicking around, is in the big screen of security, is anything going to happen to these doors or they going to, would this impact our securities concerns by?
Are you saying do away with?
Yeah, do away with these doors, break them up or?
Well, we talked about eventually putting electronic badges there, so Andy and Suzie and Brian, they could enter through their electronic badges, but it still would be a doorway. And of course adult probation, they have to have a doorway.
Possibly a different door, is that what you're saying?
No, just do away with that, break it up.
He's talking about just take it out altogether.
I think with all of the catacomb-like hallways, we'd almost need those egress ways out of that building.
It's the fire.
Yeah, we would want to get out that door.
Thank you Andy.
They want to escape right on that.
Okay, just curious.
All right, I have a motion by Kenneth, a second by Don. Do we have any further questions or discussion on that one? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. All right, hang on here just a second. I've got letters here to everybody. You want to take one and pass that down to Don? You want to take one and pass that down to Larry? Just going to break y'all in, don't worry about it. Be all right.
Let's see, is Batman going through a wonderful way?
All right, I just handed letters out to commissioners from Darlene. Item number 11 is considered, accept letter resignation from Texas collector effective 12/31/2018.
My recommendation is you regret, reject that recommendation.
Vote against it.
I make a motion, we accept this retirement letter from Darlene Chambers, effective December 31st, 2018.
I have a motion by John.
Thinking.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number 12, policy should research it through TAC and we need to remove the word interim. It's considered appoint Texas collector effective 1-1-2019, and Andy and I got an opinion from Jim Allison, and his answer was, since the office will be on the ballot for a full term of 2020, the appointee will complete the present term and serve until December 31st of 2020. And that was from Jim Allison. And Darlene, I think you have a recommendation for appointee?
I knew I would like to hear that.
All right. Do we have any questions or discussion for April?
You know what you're going to do? Okay.
April, anything you'd like to say? You weren't prepared to be put on the spot, were you?
Um, no, just that, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity that hopefully that I'll be given, and I'm excited about it, and I just plan to continue to run the office the same way that Darlene always has.
Well, do I have a motion to appoint April to fulfill the unexpired term?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion?
Since this was posted as an interim on this posting?
It's okay.
Okay, that's all.
All right. Who is, any further discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Thank you Darlene.
You wrote in.
Thank you April.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, item number 13, discuss take action purchasing property at the corner of Vernon Street and Elm Street. This is a property right straight across from Mr. Watts's office. I think we have a closing date, maybe later in the month.
Correct. Upon investigation, it would be better that, you know, we anticipate the closing right after the 1st of October, but upon investigation of when he acquired it, it would be in his best interest for income tax purposes to delay that until after the 21st of October, so he's fine with that. So, but we still, the contract cost, we closed on it before the 31st, so we're still in contract, no need for that. But obviously we won't know a final amount with closing costs until after we've been here, so what we're looking for is just a motion to authorize the judge to execute all the documents and then an authorization for the treasurer to release and to pay up to $97,000, which is what we have budgeted for the remaining cost of that property. It should not exceed $97,000.
Oh, we already set in budget for this coming year anyhow?
That's correct, that's in the line item.
Uh-huh. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry to finish the purchase of the property corner Vernon Street and Elm Street to happen after the 20th, 20th and 31st, and to immediate dispute contract up to $97,000. Does that sound good?
Plus closing costs?
That should include, that should be all inclusive.
Do I have a second?
Thinking.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number 14, discuss and approve hiring relative of current employee within the same department. Jeff, I guess that's, would you want to present that to us?
Good morning. All it is, is I've got a gentleman who's applied to work part-time at the golf course. His son is on my staff full-time. It's not a nepotism issue because neither one would be in a role of management, but according to county policy, that would have to be approved by the commissioners' court for family members closely related to work in the same department.
Do we have any discussions for Jeff or Paula? Paula, I'm mad you reviewed it, everybody's good with it?
I know it's going to be over anyone, I would say, most of them work alone, most of them people, so they shouldn't be around.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Larry.
Second.
I have a second by John. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Looks like you might as well just stay right there, haven't you? Item number 15, discuss take action on filling the position of assistant superintendent and mechanic at the golf course.
I've got a candidate who, well, he's accepted, he wants to accept the position at the golf course as the assistant superintendent. He wanted 40,000, I offered that to him. The list that's posted does not list that money, even though we do have a range for assistant, so I needed to approach you all and make sure that I could hire within the range that we do have under that job description. And relatedly, same thing for a mechanic. Mechanic's full-time position was approved during the budget, and I want to advertise to hire the second mechanic. However, the money listed on that list is outside of the range of what the mechanic is supposed to make at the golf course, so I wanted to see if we could get that cleared up too.
What we have is we have just a discrepancy between the staffing list, the amount that was listed on the staffing list, and what we had in the budget. We had, in the case of the mechanic, we did budget a $35,000 salary, no, excuse me, a $25,000 salary, and, but the staffing list listed that salary at a lower amount. And so this conflict is what we're coming here to make sure that you guys approve so that we can go ahead and proceed on with the budget document salary amount.
The money, the money in the budget looked good, it was the same, but what was on the list is what was, all the discrepancies.
Correct.
And I guess we're probably working on getting that all fixed and we resent it?
Yes, and, you know, I mean, you know, that's, that list is kind of a new thing for our budget, and so we're having some growing pains and, you know, we'll work with that. And so it's one of these deals that we're having to address. In relation to the assistant superintendent, we have 35 budgeted for that position. However, this individual is a retired military person who's covered under TRICARE, so he's willing to sign a waiver of health insurance coverage because he doesn't need it. So the savings that we will have there will more than make up for the $5,000 increase.
And we've actually got that budget in there?
Correct, it was in there for the benefits.
Benefits, yes.
So if we approve this, we're not going to come back later in the year and say that the commissioners' court approved an unbudgeted item?
No, sir, over there, the extra $5,000 for the assistant superintendent is actually in the benefits section, and this particular candidate has already asked that because of a school reason, he's going to be taking an unpaid leave for six weeks anyway, so there's a chance we may not even have to pay for, or do a budget transfer for that line up. There's no doubt we're not paying them six weeks.
And to add clarification of that, this is for him to finish his degree up in?
At Rutgers, yes, sir.
In?
New Jersey. In January through March.
The medical one.
Item.
Oh.
Degree.
Turf, horticulture, turf grass.
Something to do with grass.
Yes, sir.
Psychology. Which one is good. And in the, in the case of the mechanic, that number was already in the budget, it just didn't...
I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that.
Jeff and I spent quite a long time one morning adding the numbers up and calculating and recalculating, and the budget numbers were right, the list was what was wrong.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if we vote on this, then we'll change the list to match what we're saying.
There's another area that I don't know if I need to bring it to court or not, where the staffing list is incorrect.
That's cool. Anytime you get it updated and ready, just bring it back and we'll approve it, and then everything will be good and legit.
Because being the district that I am, I will sign off on a hire if that dollar math doesn't match the list, which was the first of the list.
Add or below, yeah.
Right, add or below.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we fill the position of assistant superintendent and mechanic at the golf course.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Thank you Jeff.
Say, Joe, you got one more?
Yes, sir, I got one more.
Did, was there a cold front out the golf course this morning?
I'm sorry.
It rained, that's his rain.
No, that's, I thought, wearing that jacket in here, I thought.
Item number 16.
It's raining.
Discuss take action to advertise RFPs to pump station at the gold course. That's cool, at the golf course.
That's something, man. I don't need a third one.
That's the lake.
All right, Jeff, I think we discussed this. Y'all probably going to be respects to Leslie maybe later this week if you hadn't already got them to Leslie, maybe you have, I don't know.
Yes, she has them.
You got them?
Yes, sir.
Ready to go out for them, okay. Do you want to discuss anything about the pump station at all?
The pump station on the lakes course is failing. I have resisted doing repairs on it this summer in anticipation of possibly replacing the whole thing. So what the RFPs are doing is, we've already had some rough numbers, but we're asking them to nail it down. There's three companies I'm aware of that build pump stations for golf courses, and we're just asking them to nail down the number so we can get back and know where we're at on possible replacement.
And you'd like to do it in January or February, correct?
I would like to do it, yes, sir. Late winter, early spring when we don't need to irrigate.
And we've already put money aside in text pools, it's not an additional... And we've already put money aside in tax pools, it's not additional, I mean, it's additional expense, but we've already put the money aside to cover this for the last couple of years.
Yes, sir.
We didn't budget for it, so it'll be a specific purchase of the county, so, to do that, but we do have the funds available.
Any questions or discussion?
I'm going to make a motion for it.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we issue RFPs for replacement and repair of pump station at the golf course.
Receive them back on what day in November, what day do we have court, November?
November the ninth.
On a Tuesday.
On a Thursday. Another holiday?
November twelfth.
I bet it's the ninth, no?
It is.
I believe it's Friday the ninth.
Actually, it's the thirteenth, it's Tuesday the thirteenth.
So we go off RFPs and receive them back by?
Friday the ninth, or, so he at least has time to look at them before we come back on the thirteenth.
The motion should include the ninth.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, he wouldn't look at them, we would open them on the thirteenth, so, then, then we can decide.
When do you want them back, by the ninth?
Yes, sir, five o'clock on the ninth.
All right, that becomes part of the motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a motion by John.
Second.
I have a second by Larry, any further questions or discussion for Brian or Jeff?
Uh, we might check locally with Skipper Services, they do a lot of pump and manufacturing stuff.
Okay. If we get their contact, we'll make sure they get the bid.
We'll also be checking buy boards and stuff, there's a lot in uni golf courses, I'm sure there's some cooperative purchasing options there too.
All right, all in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against, now, thank you, Jeff. All right, Brian, number seventeen, approve budget transfers.
As you received in the email, we have two different sets of transfers, one dealing with the final, final cleanup of last year. After we met, we still had some more invoices that came in, and so, the first, the first set is just the final little bitty lingering things to clean up our budget for the, for the year. The second set, which we can, we can approve all in one fell swoop, is actually our first set for this fiscal year. Apologize to you, Commissioner Crand. There were two that were expected, when we were passing the final budget, our clerk made you aware that there were a couple items we already knew we were under on some records management software thing, and I said we would cover that out of contingency, and so that's what we did. And then also, if you read my email, it was talking about some savings there because of the cancellation of the law enforcement module, net data, because we're going with the ZERKER system, so, those are the major things there.
Any questions for Brian? Do I have a motion to approve budget transfer?
I'm not making a motion.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by John, any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number eighteen, approve remainder of county bills.
Yes, sir, these are everything through that we closed through business on last Friday. Amounts to two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three fifty-four and eighty-five cents. In addition, there was one that was reimbursed in payroll from the cell rentals for five dollars and eighty-three cents for a meal, and I can tell you what she had, because I got the receipt right here, I'm so inclined to know.
I make a motion to pay our bills.
I have a motion by Kenneth to pay our bills.
Second.
I have a second by Don, any further questions or discussion for Brian? All in favor, motion to pay our bills, that is five, four, zero against. Item number nineteen, approve the county treasury report, which we all saw, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the treasury report.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Okay.
I have a second by Don, any further questions or discussion for Susie? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. The reason the sheriff's department is pulled out separate, because ZERKER, the way they're doing it now, has three different reports, so she put those to approve the sheriff's department by itself, and then we'll approve the rest of them. We could actually include all of it if you want to, and later, but this month it came in totally separate.
I make a motion to approve the sheriff's department reports from September.
I have a motion by Kenneth to approve sheriff's department reports. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by John, any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number twenty-one, accept and approve monthly reports from the rest of the county departments.
I make a motion to approve the monthly report for the county department.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by Don, any further question or discussion of reports?
Yeah, I'm going to back up the ZERKER report, this is.
Back to you, Alan.
It would probably be, but let's look at a summary rather than each individual thing, because that has not a whole lot of meaning to us. I'll get with you.
Any further question or discussion of reports? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion by Kenneth to adjourn, do I have a second?
Judge, you have a second.
I have a second by Don, all in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Thank you, gentlemen, again. Don and John getting closer and closer.
Oh, they're getting closer.